Good evening. Welcome to the City of West ... Okay, never mind. It was amended 11:30. I was reading 11:30, 2015. There's one said December the 2nd, 2015, at 7:40. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Please rise. Let's bow our head this evening to pray for all the victims and their families of the horrific and brutal mass shooting in St. Bernardino, California, tonight. God, may your wisdom, your guiding light be with that community that needs you more than we do right now. We pray for world peace as our year comes to an end. We pray for our elected leaders so that they can continue to serve for the greater good of the community. We pray and we thank God tonight for having the best employees anyone could ask for. And we also pray and ask our Lord to bless this community as we end one year and prepare for the beginning of a new year in our city. And I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that we would honor those victims and their families in a moment of silence as our -- to express our condolences for what has occurred in We ask for peace in your name. Amen.
Amen. Chief, for the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock hold, please.
Rock hold. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suárez is excused this evening, Mr. Mayor. You have a call.
Thank you. Item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for November 18th, 2015, local planning agency workshop.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for November 18th, 2015, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a written report, however, as instructed by your office. I am reminding everyone to attend the lighting of the tree ceremony, December 9th, Wednesday of next week. We have that tradition, and this obviously is a collective effort spearheaded by the mayor. We have three participating schools that are going to be performing for the community. We have Santa's arrival and a little carnival with food and refreshments. The flyers for that event are being distributed starting tomorrow at noon or shortly thereafter, weather permitting. And the flyers will be distributed Thursday, Friday, and possibly into Saturday morning if need be. It is a fantastic opportunity for neighbors to come together, get to meet each other, and look at their children perform, so I wanted to remind you of that. While I don't have a written report, I would like to -- the record to reflect that I will have a written report on or about December 30th with a recap of all the projects that the city has been engaged in during the last fiscal year, actually, the last calendar year, where we began in terms of project and where we're at with the status of those projects and those projects that have been completed, and basically some expected timelines on things that have been assigned to our office, and just so we can have like a year-end report. In addition to that, you will receive from my office an un-audited, call it an unofficial report on the closure of our fiscal year as of September 30th, 2015. And this will give you a pretty good idea where the city's at financially at the close of the business day on September 30th that just passed, so that you know pretty much what to expect from your audit report. I expect a good audit report. The city is making progress. We still have some cash flow issues, but I'll go into detail in that written report. I would encourage you to read that when you receive it and to meet with me and/or with the finance director so that we can go over some of the details. On behalf of my office and my staff, I want to wish every member of the city commission and your families a very, very happy Merry Christmas, the community as well, and Happy Hanukkah, and the very, very best, healthy, prosperous, and I want to call it a moving forward in one direction 2016. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by Chief, is there?
Thank you.
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
No report.
Item nine, citizen presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor. Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items. Item 11A, presentation of recognition to Jim Geswicky on his retirement after 34 years of service to the City of West Miami by mayor and city commission.
Thank you very much. It's a special moment.
Jim, I'm going to be brief, and I'm going to yield all the people. On my behalf, I wanted to thank you for your service. You have always been an example to the city, and most of all, an example to the kids. There's those people that I come across, they're no longer kids, that they talk about you all the time, and how they grew up in the wreck and so on, and that -- when I hear words like that, it makes me proud, because, you know, good news take a long time to spread around. Bad news spread around really fast. And all I've heard throughout all the years that I have been in the City of West Miami since 1986, it's always good about you and how you have been an example to the kids that grew up in the wreck. And that, to me, is a tremendous joy. And so, I'm going to deal to the manager and somebody that I think is very special, and that's the vice mayor. And vice mayor, I think I want you to do this presentation, and because I know you can do this better than me. I'll just say it that way.
The special guy here tonight is Jim. And, you know, I would like to echo some of your words. I've said this many times, in many different places. And I've said that I've walked through this city far and wide, and I have met people from all walks of life. I've met doctors, I've met lawyers, I've met janitors, you name it. And as soon as they note that I have something to do with the City of West Miami, immediately they light up and they say, "I spent my summers at the wreck. And I was there when Jim was there. Is Jim still there?" And, you know, and like I say, I've said this many times, because it has happened dozens and dozens of times throughout this county, where people, in a very joyful way, you know, all of a sudden they light up and they bring -- it brings back memories to them of summers that they spent at the wreck. And as the mayor stated, you know, your guidance, you know, your leadership, you know, it's a very tough job to -- the job that you've done. When you've got a bunch of kids, you know, a lot of things can go wrong. And, you know, kids have to be treated a certain way, and through the years, you have. And you haven't still, without you realizing it, you have instilled so much in a lot of people, because they have told me. They have told me. They have told me that you have, you know, in one way or another, touched them and has made them a better person. And they are that person today because of, you know, the interaction that they've had with you throughout these summers. So, again, I would like to say, as I've said many times, that there's a lot of people out there that are very thankful and that remember you very vividly, because they have told me. And again, like the mayor said, it makes me feel very proud, you know, that, you know, they say that about the City of West Miami and the wreck. So, thank you. I personally thank you for the many years of service that you have given to these cities and all these kids, and we want you back if you change your mind in some kind of way, you know. We need your wisdom and your input, so, you know, don't be a stranger. You know, come by and come by often.
Mayor manager.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also echo your sentiments and the sentiments of the vice mayor. Jim, I've had the privilege of working with you and getting to know you for many years now. You came to work for the city the year before I started here. And it seems to me that slowly but surely, all of us that are reaching our, call it, our golden years, are trying to find that, let's say, that our rest and earned relaxation. But you will leave a big void in the City of West Miami. You have mentored and you have played a major role in the lives of our children, my son and my daughter included. You have worked with people that have really meant a lot to this community, like Fred Fishel, Lilian Clemmon, Mr. Brown, and those that haven't been that meaningful. And you have had such a keen eye to bring it to our attention, to make sure that the children get the best of the best in terms of supervision, after-school care, summer camp, the best programs, and quality of life beyond what they get in their homes. That speaks volumes of who you are as a person. You and I have not always agreed. We have had our good, healthy discussions, but I have the utmost respect for you. But I can tell, obviously, your family's with you, that you have a solid foundation. And that's what we try to instill in our children here, and that's what the employees of the City of West Miami and our department directors are all about. You will be missed. All I can say is that I am very happy that it was during my tenure as city manager, your ability to lead was an opportunity that was offered to you, and I'm glad that I was in a good place to recommend you to the position. And obviously, the commission and the commissions, ever since that time, have really, really backed your decisions, and they have really respected what you have done for this city. I can tell you that people come and go, and people say that certain people or that we are -- that everybody's dispensable. I tend to disagree with that. I think there are some people that are indispensable, that are absolutely necessary, wanted, loved, and will be missed, and you are one of them. So, I wish you the best. Happy times to come, a good retirement, a healthy one. I know you're on the road to recovery after your knee surgery. Please know that the doors of this city are open for you. My home is open to you and to your family, and I wish you the best. You have earned it, and I don't want you to be a stranger. I want you to stay in touch, and we will be reaching out to you for a lot of professional advice, because you are in a position to be a very good advisor. So, that said, I hope I have not overextended my words, but, you know, we have 30-plus years of institutional knowledge. We recently said goodbye to another 30 years of institutional knowledge, and very soon we will say goodbye, as soon as next month, to another 30 years, 100, almost 100 years of combined institutional knowledge that the city is losing, but we're gaining, because we're gaining a friend. And I know that your heart is still at the wreck, and for as long as you keep it alive, you'll be part of this community. So, I think I'll stop here, and I wish you all the best in the world, and I thank you for your honorable service to this community.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Of course.
Jim, I'm going to take off my commissioner hat now and put on my parent hat, Rhonda, the Rhonda you've known for 30 years. You, sir, are one of the main reasons I fell in love with the City of West Miami, because you, your park, your home away from home, is what I first knew, when the kids started going there. I wasn't involved in politics then, I wasn't real involved in the city's going on, but through you, I fell in love with the city. You helped raise my children, as I'm sure you did for many other parents. I'm sure -- I speak for many parents. Your values, your old-fashioned values that you brought to the wreck, not only from you but in your staff. You picked your staff. Your values went to your staff, and from there, they went to the children. And I could go, I could be at work, and my kids were there, and I didn't have a concern in the world. I knew they were being looked after like I would look after them. So, you gave me countless years of peace of mind, knowing that they were watched, they were cared for, and they were being taught the values that I had at home. My experience with you, girls softball. I remember way back then, girls softball. We coached girls softball together. Field trips to Shark Valley, that field trip, I took summer field trips to Shark Valley when I biked, it felt like 100 miles on a bike, then I ran into the mosquitoes that were bigger than me, you know? It was crazy. But those are the things that you shared with the children, you shared with the mothers, with the fathers. Unforgettable memories, just picky-picky. My kids did picky-picky a lot of times. I will never forget that. Things that I would, you know, that's how I would do at home, how I would discipline them at home. So, I knew they were getting the same values at the park than they were at home, which was their home away from home. So, for that, I thank you. Again, you were the face of the West Miami for me, and you were part of why I fell in love with the city. So, thank you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And thank your family for you being there so much, home away from home. Thank you.
Jim, thank you. You never called me by my name. You always called me Bobby.
Thank you, Jim. Never calls me by my name.
Bobby, now we know what to call you commissioner.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is it? All right, well, let's come forward, and Jim, and your family? Please come.
By the way, I was joking, you can have that cane if you want. Stay awake. Okay. Live mayor, please come to the office.
Thank you. I'll hold for you. Thank you so much. It's a great honor, thank you. James, Jim Geswicky, City of West Miami Recreation Department, in recognition for your contributions to the City of West Miami, with 34 years of service for the City of West Miami Recreation Department, and for your loyalty, commitment, and dedication by promoting excellence in public service and providing the quality of life of the City of West Miami and its citizens, wishing you a well-deserved retirement with all our gratitude, dated the second day of December 2015. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz, Vice Mayor Juan Blanes, Candida Blanca Commissioner, Rhonda Rodriguez Commissioner, and Luciano Suárez Commissioner. Thank you.
Jim, you get the floor now. Speech, speech.
Oh, you gotta say something.
How about a family picture before you guys go down? Just a family, just a family picture. Yeah, and then the speech. Family picture first, and then the speech.
Do I cut him out?
Jim gets the floor.
Jim gets the microphone.
Got it.
Take as long as you need, sir.
You got three minutes.
That's for Elliot.
I'm going to keep it short.
You've got 30 years worth to go. Go for it.
My first experience with the West Miami Recreation Center was in 1973 or '74. I was driving around, I'd just moved to Florida, working with the federal government, and I saw this park, and I pulled down 62nd Avenue and jumped the fence with my basketball, and I started to shoot. And an attendant came over and shagged me right out. He said, "You get out of here, you're not signed up." I said, "Signed up for what?" He goes, "You couldn't be a member. If you jump the fence, you know you're not supposed to, so you're not signed up, you got to leave." I was like, "What did I do?" And I liked that. I came back about six months later, and I walked the right way through the gate, and I went up to Mr. T. I said, "Don't kick me out, I'm here with a good reason." I said, "Give me a team." They gave me a basketball team, they gave me a baseball team, and I volunteered for about five years for free. And I'd come in two nights a week, and I had kids back in the 70s, and that's how I got started. I loved being involved with children. I loved this community from the start. I had good people, Mr. Slaughter was a commissioner back then, his son played on the team. So, all the way back, I was very much enamored with the city. I liked the fact that they threw me out or something. And as time went on, I left my job with the federal government, I got hired to work with the West Miami Recreation Center, and I'll never forget my first event in Venetian Pool during the summer camp. After working in my office for years, I was laying on my back in the pool, and I said, "I can't believe I get paid to do this." I felt like I ran away and joined the circus. And since then, things have evolved. I've had tremendous cooperation with the mayors and commissioners in getting things accomplished at the wreck. We've done a lot. The new building, the grant work, all the things that we've been able to accomplish there, the programs, building the after-school program, now a reading program. The summer camp has turned into one of the best in the county. I'll tell that to anybody that cares to listen, whoever I meet. You can't compare what we do with that. And it comes from a cooperation between all of us in this room, the Alanda, the city manager, Juan is the recreation chairman. We've worked on a lot of projects together. And this is a blessing, you know, rather than having, worrying about who gets the credit, worrying about this or that, we've worked as a team, and we've gotten a lot done. It's made it a pleasure to work here. And now that I've turned 65, I've got my Medicare card, I've still got a couple of field trips in my back pocket, but they won't be with kids, they'll be my own, and I'm finding a new circus. So, thank you very much for all your kind words, and it's been a pleasure for me to be associated with this city as an employee. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
That was excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Can you read the next item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11B. This is the first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, repealing ordinance number 2015-09, which authorizes the city manager to designate certain residential areas as residential parking only, designating areas three blocks from any commercial areas, creating a residential parking zone, creating a residential and visitor parking decal program, and establishing a citation for noncompliance. Provide for certification, provide for severability, and provide for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Rodriguez.
First reading, no discussion.
No discussion.
Correct?
That is correct.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, we do have to publicly announce a date for a public hearing on this ordinance and a second reading for the purpose of keeping the record clear on this ordinance.
Yes, the public hearing will be, the second reading and public hearing will be on January 6, 2016, at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if you would entertain the public hearing, the second meeting in January, the reason for that is you have a public hearing on your comprehensive plan changes, and we would like to keep the agenda light for the first meeting in January, if that is your pleasure.
Okay. Is that meeting with?
January.
January 20th, 2016.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to advise you that on January 6th, that would be my wedding anniversary, 55 years, so I doubt that I'll be here.
You'll be excused.
Well, congratulations. I thought you were going to say the La Parada de los Hey Magos, but, you know.
What type of anniversary is that?
55, 55. Well, actually, this is my --
Silver, diamond, triple diamond?
This is my 11th marriage, because I renew my vows every five years, so, every five years, every five years. All right, well, congratulations ahead of time, just in case. Thank you.
Happy anniversary to you, Mr. Villalobos. I'm looking at Mr. Penna. A reminder, on January 6, 2016, is our comprehensive planned public hearing. There are some items that may require the input by the office of the city attorney. So, I don't know at this point whether you would like to reverse the order of the agenda for January 6th. I believe both items are going to require the presence of our city attorney at some point, may require his legal wisdom and advice and guidance. So, I leave it to you to decide, and we will advertise accordingly. Mr. Penna?
If I may, I agree that both items require legal, so maybe we'll have to just bite the bullet and do them both on the 20th. If we reverse them, that won't make any sense.
It will not, knowing what we know.
Right, so we just have to bite the bullet and bring a snack and hang out here for a while on the 20th. Bring some coffee, bring some --
Cookies.
Cookies.
Oatmeal.
Bring a blanket and hang out.
And keep a lighter agenda for January 6th, it's right after the first of the new year, and we're going to have to entertain the extension of time again contract between the City of West Miami and Florida International University, because they are on contract until January 30th. And obviously, we will not be ready to cut them loose at that point. So, we're going to need probably another 90 days to transmit the comp plan, to get the regulating agencies to submit their comments, and hold a final public hearing on the items. So, we're going to need, we're going to need to bring that item on January 6th. We will do everything in our power to have the city attorney revise the contract and give us his yea or nay on the contract.
and give us his yea or nay on, on the contract extension in writing, um, because he will not be here on the 6th of January.
So, that means the 6th, we'll just reconsider, we'll be considering renewing the contract, nothing to do with our comp plan.
The contract between the city and Florida International University?
That's all we'll have to change that day.
For the purpose of completing the project.
Okay. So, and we'll do the comp plan and the, um, what was the other one? The parking, the public area for the parking. What was the other thing on the 20th?
I will yield to you and suggest to you?
The parking ordinance.
That the parking ordinance and the comp plan both?
On the 20th. Yes, okay. That's, I just wanted to confirm that. Yes, okay. And doing the comp plan on the 20th, it doesn't affect any timelines that we have?
It, it pushes it back just a little bit, but I don't think that it compromises our comprehensive plan status.
Okay.
It compromises our contract with FIU. And it may involve an additional expenditure of funds, because they are going beyond the contract time for the scope of the work that they set out to do. We may see a financial, um, clause in there. Or we can have a special meeting.
We don't have it. Oh, we could do that.
No, we, we need, we need to extend it anyway. Uh, I mean...
We, we have no choice at this point.
Because the contract was till December, from what I understand.
Until January 30th.
January 30th. Okay. But it's still, they, they have to, they have to submit. There's a process that has to be...
There's a process. And we, I can tell you today that that will not be completed on January 30th.
We don't have a choice. We can't do this without the attorney, so...
Okay. Well, but all in favor, say aye for the 20th.
Aye.
I just wanna make a comment for that long day that we're supposed to have. Uh, we, we need some food. If, if we can have, if, if not, let me know. I'll bring food.
I'll bring cookies.
You know what Napoleon said, you know, "An army marches on his stomach."
You got it. I understand.
And believe me, you know, we, we come here, we haven't eaten dinner, and, you know, and... So, maybe something from Latin American?
A potluck. Do a potluck. Everybody bring something.
Something from Latin American. Okay.
We'll get something. Um, another option, maybe?
Make some of that pork meat you, you make, and then, uh, some mortos.
We're talking a whole dinner? Or we're having snacks? We're talking a buffet here?
Celebrate the new year.
Hungry.
Well, I, I, I gotta say something. Uh, the mayor here went to sleep at 3 o'clock last night and got up at 6.
So, you want to shut up and keep going?
So, yeah. So, so basically, I'm, you know, I might fall asleep, and then you might without a mayor.
Bring coffee now.
So, okay. All right.
We got it. Moving on.
The 20th. Okay, moving on. Let's go to item C, please.
11C, report from the Office of the City Manager in reference to letter from Miami-Dade County on environmental tax collections on water and sewer bills by City Manager.
Uh, can you also read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11D, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the city of West Miami, increasing the environmental tax collection from 7.5% to 8% to section 2434, 34 of the Code of Miami-Dade County for all water and sewer bills, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, briefly, if I may, before you take a vote on this resolution that is before you, we are, and, uh, considered a utility for the purpose of, um, providing our residents with water and sewer service. On November 19, 2015, we, uh, received a letter from Miami-Dade County advising us that we, uh, known as a utility company or agency, are required to collect the county's service fee at a rate of 8% versus the 7.5% that is currently in place. We pay Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer Department on December 1 of each year, a, um, a percentage, uh, called environmental tax. It's a tax, which is basically predicated on the, on the consumption of water that we buy from the county and resell to our users. That percentage pursuant to the county code has now gone from 7.5% to 8%. And we must pass that on to our users. It's a half a percent. It's based on what people consume. And we are simply required under Miami-Dade County Code to collect that. So, I would encourage you, this is not an increase in the water bills. It is an increase to the environmental tax. And that's all associated with the Clean Water Act and the whole consent decree issue, um, that are, that's stipulated in the Code of Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances. So, I would encourage you to pass this resolution.
Any questions for the manager?
Yes, I do. Madam Manager, we're looking at like pennies for as far, as far as a resident's concern, right?
I mean, it can't be... It should be something minimal, um, but it's, again, um...
It's an increase.
It's an increase. It's an increase. Um, it, it may range from $2 to $10, depending on what you consume. It's, it's strictly driven by consumption.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? I need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, our second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, she polled. Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you. Go to the order.
We wish you a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy Christmas, Happy New Year.
This is our last meeting of the year.
Eagle bells or something to end the...
Actually, I got something. Yes. Okay, let's, after all, this is December, okay?
December 2, November.
I, I think we had a great year, uh, in the city of West Miami. Uh, like, every year, we have adversities. But I, I think the blessings that we had so far have overcome those adversities. And, uh, I'm, I pray that we all keep working together like we have this last year's. And the next year will be even better for the city of West Miami. Uh, this is something that we have been building upon for many, many years, and it's finally happening. And, uh, and I see that next year is gonna be, we, we're gonna start receiving those fruits of our labor for, for all the years that we have sat over here, that we have worked together with, uh, uh, you know, uh, everybody, everybody. Uh, Mr. Penna, that wears many, many hats. Uh, um, our, uh, manager, that sometimes we don't see eye to eye, but, uh, like she says, but, uh, but, uh, she tells us what, what is good, now what we wanna hear. Um, our city clerk, uh, you know, uh, every day, you know, she, she brings, uh, uh, you know, the records to, to a new record.
To a new level.
To a new level. City Attorney. And, uh, it's a, it's a pleasure, sir, you know, working with you and getting your bias and getting your institutional knowledge. And, and you always have an example. I'm an example type of person. And, uh, I, I like that, because you always have a, an example to, to show how we should conduct business. And that's... Parable. Parable. Yeah, that too. And, and, and also, very, very, very grateful to our police department. Thank you, Chief. Um, since, uh, I can tell you that we all have lived here in the city of West Miami for many, many years. And since you became the chief, it has been a joy. It, every day, the city, I mean, the police department, it, it gets to a new level. And, and it's a tremendous improvement. So, for all that, I think we should be blessed. And, uh, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to everybody, and, uh, see you next year.
I got a little something. You've inspired me, Mr. Mayor. Probably quick, I'll be brief. I, I wanna thank my colleagues, including Commissioner Suarez, that's not here. Uh, I know that we may not always agree, but I know that each and every one of you, you know, has the city of West Miami in his heart. And above all, we put our, our self-interest and our ego aside. And, you know, we concentrate on what is the possible best decision that we can make to make the city of West Miami a great city to live in and increase the quality of life of our residents. And I know that with this commission, we have that. And again, with the administration, the police department, uh, like, like the mayor said, I don't wanna be, repeat myself here, uh, or, or the mayor, but I, I thank you all. And, and you all know who you are. Uh, we wouldn't have what we have here if it wouldn't be for, for, for the, for the employees that we have here. So, as a resident, I, I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Means the world to us.
All right. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Mayor?